Okay, welcome everyone to October 25th, North Idaho College's regular board meeting. We're called to order, please, we have a quorum, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For, we have about six people up for public comment, thank you for coming down, and a Robert Schepler, if you would please come to the microphone with a Greg, Greg is on deck.
My name is Robert Schepler and I'm here to speak about accreditation and an item that was discussed at the last board meeting. During the latter parts of the last board meeting, Mr. Banducci asked what we could do to terminate the contract of Dr. Gregory South. This is a key point to have one president for the college. Mr. Banducci, I sent a letter to the editor, it was published in today's paper, that gave some directions on what we can do to correct the issue. I just want to read off some numbers for the people in the audience that maybe don't know everything. Dr. South's contract is available on the NIC website, it lists a base pay of $235,000 for a 12-month contract. That means his base pay is $19,600 a month. There are eight months left on the contract, it's due to expire in June. This board can extend that at their will, and I suspect they either will, in June, just because they can. It has an additional cost of 15% to a retirement fund, which is another $2,900 a month. I have to rhetorically ask how much of that is being sent to Falcon Investments? It has a $3,000 per month housing allowance, it has two vacation days per month and a sick day per month, those days are valued at approximately $900 each. This means the contract total has approximately $28,300 per month, plus the family medical costs, roughly $29,000 per month being spent on Dr. Gregory South's contract. Eight months left of that means we have a total amount of just north of $226,000 left on that. Now, how do you terminate the existing contract? Well, it's really convenient because in the contract itself, in section 12.2, it says the contract can be terminated without cause by NIC with the payment of 12 months of the base pay contract. The balance on it now is 226,000 plus, terminate the contract costs $235,000. Take the steps, we will wait, go into executive session now, terminate that contract, and quit wasting the rest of our time and money, and finally check off a spot for the NWCCU that they require you to do to keep our accreditation.
Thank you. Hey Greg, you're on deck. And Karen Schepler, you're on deck.
Hi, Greg Green, community member, I guess. I was, I'm here for something that's kind of silly, but quite honestly, I thought it was sort of a slap in the face that the board refused to pay Dr. Swain's $300 bill for something like economic development or something like that. You know, we can pay two attorneys, but we can't pay for him to be a part of an economic development group. So I'm just going to give you the $300, Dr. Swain, and I apologize that he would, thank you.
Karen Schepler. Karen, we're skipping Karen Schepler.
I'm right here, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you.
I'm not sure how you can miss me, but...
No, I was going to offer you an opportunity at the end, go ahead.
So first, I just want to say that that is what our community is about. Now normally, we get stuck spending 90% of our time, the bottom 20%, so I'm going to try and flip that tonight. I want to thank the junior members of this board for showing up on time, prepared, to be attentive, you've read your board books, you generally speak with intelligence, with logic, with education, and those of us sitting in the audience appreciate when you speak, even if you're not heard by the entirety of the board. And I'll say that to all three junior members, because I've heard you, all three of you, take the time and put yourself out there to make this a better college. I've heard you in your subcommittee sessions, and while I don't always agree with everything you all have to say, you do it with respect, and you do it with clearly a genuine respect and heart for this institution. You're not in it for yourselves, clearly, because of the work you're doing. So I'm about 90% through my time, so now I want to know what the obstacle is to get the senior members to act in the same way. I'll take tonight for example. There's a trustee at the end of the table who didn't bother to let anybody know he was going to be here tonight, and is still sorting through papers and not listening, because he doesn't seem to give a damn. Excuse my language. The beginning of public comment, the chairs rustling through paper, not listening, and yet public comment is when you're supposed to be able to hear us. You give us two minutes of time, two minutes to tell you what we think, and I've emailed, and I've called, and you still act like irresponsible adolescents. What is...
Thank you. Joe Jacoby and Jamie Berube is on deck. Joe Jacoby.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak to unfinished business tab two with the document about the board response to constituency groups' votes of no confidence. It states in there, "The accrediting visiting team acknowledged Dr. Sabaly's qualifications that takes issue with faculty's treatment." And I wanted to read from the March 2nd, 2022, letter from NWCCU, where they quote, "The panel finds that the core of the institution remains in place with dedicated administrators, faculty, and staff. The primary cause appears to lie with the Board of Trustees for its intrusions into operational decisions of the institution." And it goes down to say, "The panel concludes that the institution is out of compliance with respect to accreditation standards 2.8.1 through 2.8.4 and ERs 9, 10, and 11, and a concern saying misgivings about the process used to elect interim president Sabaly have reduced his ability to effectively lead the institution." That's on page five of the letter. On page 13, quote, "The process used to identify the interim president used reduced qualifications compared to former presidential searches, and deliberations were held in closed session without receiving input from faculty, staff, and students." On page 13, it also brings up, "Given the significant turnover administrators and the hiring of an interim president with little executive administrative experience, there is a significant concern regarding whether the institution employs faculty, staff, and administrators sufficient in role number and qualifications to achieve its organizational responsibilities, educational objectives, establish and oversee academic policies." On page 15, it brings up again installing an inexperienced interim president without consultation, and on page 16 says, "Given the significant turnover administrators, faculty, and staff, and the hiring of an interim president with limited executive administrat..."
I just have one question. You're referencing which document the board has an approved response?
It's in the board book.
Which board book?
The board book for tonight, and the title of his dissertation is Rural Higher Education Board Governance as It Relates to Athletics, rather than being about board governance, it's quite specific to rural schools and athletics.
Tab, can you give me a copy of what you're talking about?
Tab two.
It's blank. Oh, board response to consider, okay. Suggested motion for board action. This is interesting. No, I think this blue sheet.
Yeah, and it was distributed after the board, at the board meeting, last board meeting as well, so people are familiar with the document, and I wanted to just correct some facts.
I'll have to re-watch and, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Berube.
Jamie Berube, I'm talking about constituent reports, specifically staff assembly, and how our staff assembly chair was treated. Lawsuits, Dr. Swain has every right to pursue reimbursement costs for those incurred by the three board members and legal counsel for erroneous administrative leave. The same board members and attorney have caused the college an insurmountable amount of unnecessary waste of money and taxpayers' dollars. This is his right. Disrespect and slander, the employees do not work for you, Todd Banducci, or any member of this board. We work for President Swain, and therefore, to be told that we are insubordinate to do our jobs and be thankful for them is insulting and can be considered a direct threat. Todd owes every employee in here tonight and on this college a public apology. While three board members and attorneys are in violation of so many policies, procedures, standards, and open meeting laws, the employees are working as hard as we can to serve students, families, and this community, and promote the great programs and quality instruction of NIC has to offer in spite of your antics. Todd, we are doing our jobs. Do yours and get off the cross, somebody else needs the wood. We are entitled to our opinions and our perspectives based on facts and what we are experiencing. Greg, you allow Todd to go on rants that are completely off-topic, dredge up past history that does not pertain to agenda items, and silence the students, employees, and the public with your gravel.
Can you pause the time? Security, will you please, this lady is interrupting this person, she's interrupting his experience?
I'm up next, I'm just waiting.
Okay, well then, can you move to the side so you're not interrupting people?
The side or the side?
How about close to me on the other side, so you're not interrupting the cameras?
Nobody else was given that direction.
Well, they weren't specifically holding hands in front of cameras.
I was adjusting my hair.
I saw you. So are you going to move, or?
I don't think that we, she's done anything that would violate our First Amendment rights.
What is, what is your camera name, sir? Sir, what is your camera name? What is your, what is your name? Jeremy. Do you feel that your camera is being directly obstructed?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same as sitting in front of somebody.
Does it matter? He's an important individual, just like you're an important individual, let's show each other respect, please.
But I'm not allowed to stand here where the press is. He's in the press box, but he's not with the organization. Ask for his press.
Mr. Chair, I have an exception here with the president. Are you seriously going to side with somebody being that rude, blatantly and intentionally? Is that really the position you're going to take as our president here of this college?
What is this gentleman doing standing? What is this gentleman doing standing?
I'd like to.
I don't want to be filmed.
You don't want to be filmed?
It's a public meeting.
No, I don't want to be filmed.
I believe there's already a film on you, just by being part of the meeting.
That's a news station, I don't want to be filmed by somebody that's not part of the media.
You don't have that choice.
I'm really sorry, but...
I also have the choice of free speech.
Do you feel threatened by him?
Yeah, I do.
That's a nice fallback.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you going to start the clock and may I finish? Because this is perfect segue to what we're talking about right now.
Okay. All right, please start her timing again, or 20 seconds, go ahead.
The two of you interrupt, cut people off, and only allow two minutes for public comment when other government meetings allow three. Both of you are patronizing and rude to anyone that says something that is truthful and hits a nerve. If you, as Chair Greg, would get a grip on your meetings, then they wouldn't be four to five hours, and you could go to bed.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, we're going to Teresa Boronpol. We're going to Teresa Boronpol.
My name is Dr. Teresa Boronpol, I live over in Post Falls, I'll be talking tonight about accreditation. So there's something I've been noticing recently in Cootney County, and that is that boards that have KCRCC endorsed majorities, or Cootney County Republican Central Committee endorsed boards, majorities, have been voting to disassociate from their local, state, and national organizations. We've seen that with the library board, separating from the American Library Association, Lakeland School District recently separated from the State School Board Association, and the board majority here says over and over that they're very interested in staying with NWCCU, but their actions would suggest otherwise every single meeting. All the way down to the last board meeting, Greg McKenzie decided to scrutinize the president on a $300 charge to be a Rotary member. So why do we have these memberships, everyone? Well, these memberships exist because at the national level, we can get research that's been done, cutting-edge research, we can benchmark ourselves amongst other institutions, which is really important to understand where we are and how we're doing. We can network with people, that matters at the local and state level as well, because we can talk to people about what issues they're having and how as a community college, we can help to solve those issues, and they can, we can share with them the issues we're having and they can help. It's a relationship. And so I don't know why all these KCRCC majority-endorsed boards are doing this besides being told by your overlord, but it's been making me think a lot about why boards would be doing this, and it keeps bringing me back to an abusive relationship, where an abuser will separate their victim from their friends, their families, and their loved ones. They do that, of course, so that way their friends, so that way the victim doesn't have access to resources, the victim doesn't have access to perspective, they don't have any access to hope. And Greg, the look on your face, and Todd in Mike, I'm sure you're sitting back saying, "Well, gosh Teresa, that seems like quite the overreach. We just happen to be in power and we know better." And isn't that what the abuser would think?
All right, that concludes public meeting, moving to celebrating success. Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce Pat O'Halloran and Andy?
Yes, I would. So, gosh, I don't remember the date, but, but they, these guys put together a thing called the Rathrum Rumble, and invited a bunch of classic cars and motorcycles out to our facility at Parker. It was, it's a, I consider these to be strategic recruiting events, where we bring people together on our facilities to see what's going on, to see the facility, many of them hadn't been there. In fact, I think the sheriff came that day and said, "This is the first time he'd seen Parker," and hadn't, hadn't been in the building. So brings a lot of folks out there and allows them to see what we have, see the opportunities, and, and get to partake in a really cool car show. So they had almost 100 vehicles out there, and I'll let them tell the rest of the story. It was a wonderful event. Thank you very much, President Swain, Trustee McKenzie, Chair McKenzie, and Trustees, NIC community. I'm Pat O'Halloran, your interim Chair of the, excuse me, Trades and Industry Division. I'm here with Andy Rogie, representing K-Tech and our auto collision repair program there. Cal DeHaas couldn't be with us this evening, but he had everything to do with what we're about to talk about. Our esteemed instructors had the bright idea, and it was a bright idea, to have a community engagement event. There are a lot of car enthusiasts in our area, including them, in their auto body repair program. They did a trial event, if you will, last year, we have great facilities and great grounds for it out there in Rathrum. So yeah, with that modest success, encouraged Cal to apply and got a small grant from the Collision Repair Education Foundation, so congrats to the, all compliment to them as well for investing in us. That afforded an extra level of marketing, which our marketing team embraced, funded some t-shirts for the event and some early publicity. So through sales of t-shirts and registration of cars, besides showcasing NIC's fine facility out there, which I'll go into, it raised the event through a modest registration fee and some t-shirt sales, more than $2,900, which will help send students to the Skills USA competition this year. So that's way ahead of a normal year. We did have roughly 100 cars, we had more than 100 registrations, the chilly weather kept a few people back, and what a great day it was. I led four tours myself of groups of community members around the facility, and including the sheriff, as you mentioned, sir. I know there were at least three other tours went on, of just community, community members cycling through, invariably saying like, "Wow, I didn't realize what we had here," and point achieved. You know, out there in Rathrum, that's a wonderful facility and ample space, we appreciate all the investment in that, and really love showing it off to our community. Andy, if you want to speak to the student involvement, please.
Thanks, Pat. The whole goal for this car show was to bring more younger student aged out to see that beautiful campus we have for our career in technical education. We do have a partnership with K-Tech, and I am the K-Tech instructor that is housed inside of that building that works with Cal DeHaas in the NIC program. It was really fun to get my students to participate and actually create, you know, awards and get things ready for the event, and they put, they all did a pretty good, during the event, also. So I was able to use my students and a bunch of, you know, the NIC students also to help keep the event flowing, and it was amazing to see the community outreach on it. We had a lot of, like you said, different tours and stuff that came through, and even today, I was walking a student around that came about, that, one of the tours that came from that day. So he was curious about our program, because he heard his father went through and actually had a, had a very good, you know, tour through the building, and thought it was very, a very nice place to be. So it's fun to just bring students out, younger students, to be able to see these, this beautiful facility. I'm hoping you guys will be able to attend it next year, we do have a tentative date of September 28th for next year. It is after the high school is in session, so that they can help make stuff like this. I want them to have a good way of participating, I know it's a little bit later in the year, but it, I think it has to be that time.
Yeah, it's a bit of a, taking our chance with the weather, but it's the right time for the students, and they're at the point of it, so. Thank you very much for your time and interest, and yeah, we look forward to seeing you next year at the Rathrum Rumble, September 28th, as Andy said.
Yep.
And our next community event, just to plug it, is this coming Friday, a trick-or-treat is happening between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, so please, come on out to Rathrum, to NIC's fine Parker career ticket.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions by trustees? Did you state how many people showed up, or do you have a estimate?
The estimate, I would say upwards of 250 community members were out there. Mind you, each car had one or two people with it, and there's probably 100 cars. We had quite a rotation throughout the day. It was cold, it started to rain, and people left early because they didn't want their classic cars to get wet.
That's true.
But it was a really nice event, really nice event.
And like you mentioned before, the Skills USA portion of it is, is what it ultimately funded. Both our, my program and Cal's love to participate in that, where we get to go to Boise and compete in that sort of career field, so it, it helps us with our travel, and possibly, if, we usually tend to go have a student that, from here, that goes to nationals, so it helps with that overall travel for that. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constituent reports, Michael Haberman, will you please present to us?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Swain, members of the community. You may be wondering why I'm not wearing the lucky tie tonight, well, it is October, meaning it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So ASNC is encouraging those members of the community to support their local survivors. I have an announcement tonight, and that would be that I'm happy to welcome the last senator that we're adding to ASNC, and that would be Ashley Grant. Would you please stand, Ashley? This team has really come together, and we're, I'm really grateful for the candidates who applied, got interviewed, and got hired. I really see potential in this future team, and I'm really happy for what's coming up. The hammocks are up, as you know, that I announced that they'd be up last week, last month, and it started to snow in true Idaho fashion, so they may be down shortly, but they should be coming back midterms of spring, or whenever it decides to get warm again. We are continually going over the student government constitution, as I mentioned last month, as well as working on our other projects. ASNC attended night at the library, checking students in, and we have had the most students since pre-COVID, showing possible jumps in student involvement, so that was super cool, and it was a really great event. Myself and my vice president, Tom Hershey, went down to Lewiston, a two-hour drive from here, and met with the State Board of Education, as well as other community college and university student government presidents. It was really awesome to meet all of them, and we have more meetings planned in the future, or at least one planned in February, so it's really nice to hear different perspectives coming from other community, or other college presidents, and the State Board of Education was really interested on how students' lives were. We are also planning a leadership retreat to better get to know each other and develop some leadership abilities. That should be coming up in November, and I'll happy to add that to my board address. And then ASNC plans to attend the CTE trick-or-treat event that was just announced, and we invite community members to come down this Friday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And lastly, ASNC did pass a resolution yesterday. The resolution was unanimous, zero abstaining, zero against, and does the board, would you guys like a copy as I read it?
Would love written copies.
Okay, yeah. I'll just...
That's good, that's good.
I'll get a copy, yeah.
I think everyone but lawyers get a copy.
I mean, if, I mean, you guys can share, I'm sure.
Yes.
This is essentially ASNC's version of the response of no, votes of no confidence, similar to faculty and staffs, and we're asking of the board. To give context, the first whereas is the reasoning behind the vote of no confidence. The other whereases are positive improvements the board's made since December of '22 to improve this college, and the be it resolves are what ASNC is asking the board, and finally the therefore is the withdrawal of no vote confidence if those are met, so I'll read off the resolution. Whereas, whereas, "The associated students of North Idaho College has previously passed a vote of no confidence that was acknowledged by the Board of Trustees. This resolution was passed due to lack of integrity, not looking towards the best interests of the college, and lack of transparency in placing North Idaho College President Swain on administrative leave. Whereas, the Board of Trustees have participated in training from the ACCT for several months and have shown improvements in several areas since December of 2022. Whereas, the Board of Trustees have taken President Swain off administrative leave and voted not to oppose summary judgment in the Swain v. NIC lawsuit, from placing him on administrative leave. Whereas, Trustees Mike Wagner and Terry Zimmerman have been working on board policy with Dr. D. Thomas and President Swain. Be it resolved, ASNC acknowledges that we must have a president of the college who is chosen by relevant stakeholders and is represented by students, staff, and faculty. Currently, that president is Dr. Nick Swain. Be it resolved, ASNC requests the board follow all ACCT and NWCCU guidelines based on ACCT's June letter with areas of concern and NWCCU's extension letter. Namely, the board needs to focus on policy and not operations of the college that is not within their purview. Be it resolved, President Swain was one of the elected candidates chosen by relevant stakeholders, and the Board of Trustees hired him via that process. The Board of Trustees must work with the college president and not against him for the good of NIC. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees will not involve itself in operations of the college. That is, the Board of Trustees shall work with the president, provide support to help the president, and achieve his goals mutually agreed upon by both the board and the president. Therefore, ASNC will withdraw our vote of no confidence if the be it resolved clauses are addressed and fulfilled." Do you guys have any questions or comments for me? And this was just passed yesterday, so apologies, I didn't send an email beforehand.
I don't, not a response right now, but maybe talk after, just to help me out on certain things.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to talk to anyone or give my...
I'll just say thank you for preparing this and your thoughtfulness in it, and I appreciate pointing, the pointing out the few things that you did that we could resolve, and giving us an opportunity to resolve it with you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I mean, during that special meeting with trustee McKenzie, trustee Zimmerman, and trustee Wagner, you guys showed that you're really working on the policy, and that, that's a huge positive for the college, and yeah, so thank you on that as well. And then, yeah, that concludes my report, and thank you guys so very much for giving me the time, and yeah.
Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Faculty Assembly, we're moving to Kathleen Miller-Green.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees, President Swain, local community members and our exceptional faculty, staff and students. At the October twelfth, twenty twenty-three Faculty Assembly Meeting, we addressed the following items of business. As usual, standing reports from Senate, Student Learning Outcomes Assessment Committee, advising and adjunct committees were presented. Assistant Professor of Theater Eric Wolf was featured in faculty celebrations this month and related to the assembled faculty information about the student-written musical production based on Pride and Prejudice called Pride v. Prejudice, which opens tomorrow, October twenty-sixth and runs through October twenty-ninth. All are invited to come and see what our students can do with exceptional faculty guidance and support. Hannah Reichert from the NIC Trio Program presented to faculty about the important work we can cooperatively engage in on behalf of our first-generation low-income and disabled trio students. Great reminder of the targeted and generous support NIC provides to our students. The Chair Report primarily addressed two topics. The first, the ongoing work of updating the committee and college service lists and charters as well as the need for more faculty for the new Academic Freedom Committee and the restructured Faculty Course Evaluation Committee. And secondly, the upcoming N W C C U site visit next week from October thirtieth through November first. Currently, the updating of the faculty participation on committees and college service is well underway. It was in a bit of a disarray due to faculty leaving the campus. We had a number of committees that have not met in a very, very long time. And so once all the committees and college service assignments are verified and the goals and charters are identified, that updated spreadsheet then will be sent to division chairs for them to ascertain if faculty are fulfilling contractual obligations for college service. The Academic Freedom Committee has been filled. We're very excited to to say that and we await only two more additional faculty to complete filling the Faculty Course Evaluation Committee. Once those slates are full, Dr. Sherri Simkins will help to launch those groups with work on their goals and charter and to identify the parameters and guidelines for the committee work. Regarding the N W C C U site visit, at the September twelfth Meeting of Faculty Assembly, we were working under the assumption that there would be open forums for faculty, staff and students as there were in April twenty twenty-three. Faculty was reminded to thoroughly review the recommendations of the July seventh Extended Sanction of Show Cause Letter as well as the N W C C U eligibility requirement links on the NIC webpage and advised to use these sources of documentation when creating statements for the N W C C U. Our intent was to hold several meetings in the weeks prior to the N W C C U visit to gather faculty input and present a unified unified and targeted approach to preparing for that visit. At the President's Advisory Council meeting on October seventeenth, however, it was announced that the N W C C U had developed the structure of the site visit agenda which did not include open forums for any of the constituency groups, but rather scheduled meetings with the leadership of each of those groups. In response, Faculty Assembly Executive Committee quickly organized three opportunities for faculty to attend in person or by Zoom to discuss the items, content and documentation for any comments to be discussed during the scheduled Monday, October thirtieth, three P M N W C C U meeting with Faculty Assembly Executive Committee. Meetings were held on Friday, October twentieth at ten, Monday, October twenty-third at one and Wednesday, October twenty-fifth at two. So that was just this afternoon. Faculty was also able to send comments and topics to me via email. A total of sixty-four faculty members participated in one or more of those meetings or submitted comments via email or phone. Faculty Assembly Executive Committee continued to meet after we were finished with the with the open faculty meeting this afternoon to collate and organize faculty comments and documentation. All comments and information prepared for the N W C C U site visitors will be linked to NIC policy, Idaho State Law, N W C C U eligibility requirements and/or the recommendations received in the July seventh twenty twenty-three Extended Sanction of Show Cause Letter. My last report item is a response to the request by trustee Banducci at the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. After hearing the Staff Assembly Chairs' report where NIC staff affirmed the action items recommended by faculty to start to address the votes of no confidence, trustee Banducci, referring to the third point in those statements about a buyout for Dr. Gregory South's contract, stated, "If you have the formula on how to buy out a president's contract, please bring it to me or bring it to us. You keep asking us to buy out a president's contract, so tell me how to do it." In response, I would like to share Dr. Gregory South's employment contract created created by attorney Art Mackimer and signed and signed by both Dr. South and Chair Greg McKenzie on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Of particular pertinence to trustee Banducci's request are Section Four, Renewal and Resignation, and Section Twelve, Termination of Agreement. In Section Four of Dr. South's employment agreement, Art Mackimer required that there be a review of the agreement, quote, "before the end of the fiscal year," unquote, which was June twentieth, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. He also said that this review would determine, quote, "whether to extend this agreement an additional year with or without additional modification. Such review shall be accomplished to allow time for board discussion and action at a properly noticed board meeting," end quote. A review of the board book and agenda for the June seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees Meeting, including the motioned and seconded emergency amendment to the agenda at the June seventh meeting, showed no reference to a review of Dr. South's agreement nor discussion nor a vote to continue the employment agreement another year as required by the signed agreement. In Section Twelve, Termination of Agreement of Dr. South's Employment Agreement, Art Mackimer details in five subsections, the options, procedures and timeline for both termination of the agreement and buyout provisions. Not being an attorney, I cannot state definitively, but it would appear that the continuance of Dr. South's contract past June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three constitutes a violation of the provisions of this employment agreement. If a way can be found to legally justify the extension of the employment agreement passed June thirtieth, then the clearly outlined provisions of Section Twelve of the employment agreement should provide more than ample direction and authority to terminate and or buy out Dr. South's contract. This action would directly address the July seventh, twenty twenty-three N W C C U Recommendations Two, Three, Ten and Eleven and N W C C U Standard Two dot A dot Three concerning having only one C E O, Dr. Nick Swain, with full-time responsibility to the institution. And with those report items, I am now open for questions.
Hearing none. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Matt Pikarski. Excuse me, security.
You're warned. You're warned, yeah.
Does that suffice?
It's sufficient.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees and President Swain. I got a little shorter report tonight compared to last month. Our staff assembly meeting was on October twelfth. We review, we're, we discussed reviewing our staff assembly bylaws. And then we also discussed the upcoming N W C C U visit. We also set up a way for staff to send us or to the Executive Committee of Staff Assembly what they want to bring to the N W C C U as well. And then we had, we also discussed vacancies on our standing college committees. That sums up our meeting. You have any questions?
No, just a response that we're still working. You mentioned the appeal kind of comments and and that hasn't been lost.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to that next time.
Thanks.
Hope that are December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senate, Jason Drosh.
Good evening, trustees, President Swain. Senate has actually met twice in October. The agenda was quite full. We had a first reading of Policy and Procedure three point zero four zero one, a first read of Policy seven point zero one zero four, and we finalized our response or our review of previous resolutions passed by Senate and I have a response for the board tonight. In regards to Policy seven point oh one oh four, I've been asked to read the following document and I will provide a copy to the board clerk at the end tonight. This is dated today. The College Senate appreciates the opportunity to review the proposed revisions of Policy seven point zero one zero four from the Board of Trustees and has voted to reject it. Per Procedure two point zero one zero four, Section Two E, Senate will be returning this policy and the to the proposing party, e.g. the board, with all of our comments. But I have a summary of the concerns at this time. "Granting the board chair the final decision-making power contradicts Board Policy two point zero one zero two and Idaho Code Title thirty-three, twenty-one oh seven, which specifies that the authority in selecting professionals and setting qualifications is belonging only to the Board of Trustees." "The policy changes regarding RFP authority, removal of the president's cabinet and limiting the president's operational control conflict with Board Policy two point zero two zero one, assigning operational control to the college president." "The procedure, excuse me, the policy changes eliminate the ad hoc committee's ability to review proposals, make recommendations, exclude the president's cabinet and allow the board to select interim professional service providers without an employee ad hoc committee or input from administration. This violates participatory governance standard N W C C U two A dot four." "The provision allowing for individual board members to contact and communicate with a service provider seems to violate Policy two point zero one dot ten prohibiting individual trustees from making direct requests to college employees." "The policy was sent directly to Senate, bypassing the president and the administration. This seems to be in violation of Procedure two point zero dot four, which delineates a collaborative process between the College Senate, the president and the Board of Trustees." "My final statement regarding this is that the College Senate urges the board to collaborate with the president and administration to identify and address any substantive issues with the current form of the policy and after that, Senate would be happy to participate." Also during October, we reviewed all of our previous resolutions. The Senate in August and then in September formed a subcommittee of two members from each of the constituent groups to go back through, read their resolutions and to bring them into a coherent cohesive statement. That subcommittee worked through the month of October and presented to the full Senate last week. The document that was produced, that was approved by the the full Senate is quite long and so I was asked to read a executive summary of the concerns. However, I'm more than happy to read the full document should that be requested. Excuse me, the overview of concerns. This is regarding the three resolutions passed by Senate over the last several years. "Participatory governance at North Idaho College is crucial. It enables collaboration among faculty, staff, students and administration with the Board of Trustees to advance the college's best interests, uphold the mission of the college and to serve the community." "The College Senate, identified as the principal vehicle for faculty, staff and student input on policies and procedures, which is identified in Policy two point zero one dot zero four, is integral due to the direct and reasonable interest as constituents, which is the standard from the N W C C U two dot A dot four." "Other instances of participatory governance on campus include the Committee of Meet and Confer, college committees in general, administrator hiring, tenure and naming of facilities, just to pick a few." "The North Idaho College community is currently facing challenges that have emerged from a show cause sanction issued by N W C C U. This sanction was imposed in part due to the Board of Trustees neglecting to invite and listen to input from constituent groups." "Faculty, staff and students, along with the College Senate, have repeatedly communicated our concerns to the Board of Trustees. Through resolutions passed in March twenty twenty-one, September twenty twenty-one and December twenty twenty-two, the College Senate has emphatically stated objections to the board's violating of our participatory governance and we've offered support for the concerns brought forward by the constituent groups related to the board's adherence to mechanisms that ensure participatory governance, respecting the president's authority over college operations and proper board conduct. The consequences of the board's actions and inactions have a profound impact on the college community. Therefore, the College Senate calls on the Board of Trustees to address the following imperatives. "The Senate expects that the board honor constituent group input and decision-making processes. The Senate expects the board to refrain from exceeding its established role, allowing the administration the autonomy necessary for effective day-to-day operations. The Senate expects that the board strictly adhere to its own policies regarding professional, respectful and ethical conduct. The College Senate's objective is not only to have these concerns acknowledged, but to see concrete actions taken by the Board of Trustees ensuring the college's stability and securing its accreditation for the future." "As mentioned, Senate has asked for me to ask if you would like me to read the full document. Either way, I'll be providing it for the board clerk to provide to you." Thank you.
Just give it to the board clerk and more dialogue on the topic, I think is fine, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Hearing no questions. President's report, Dr. Swain.
All right, so I'll I'll do just a quick update on accreditation. The visiting team arrives on Sunday. They start work early Monday and plan to wrap up by noon on Wednesday. There are no large forum sessions scheduled for this visit, as was noted by the constituent group leaders. The team has asked to meet with the board individually and as a whole, which is a bit different than last time. And then they will meet with the constituent group leadership and cabinet members as, but just the leadership. So we look forward to that meeting. It's going to be a full week next week and we we hope to have a a good visit. In terms of recruiting, again, one of the risks that was identified in our accreditation letter was the impact of declining enrollments on our budget. That's that's an important aspect of it. It wasn't just declining enrollments is how those impact our budget. So the good news is, again, that that due to the mix of students and the number of credits taken, we are now within ninety-nine percent of our fall tuition revenue budget, so we're up just a little bit from the last month. We're the final fall enrollment and we'll have a the the final census data provided next month, I think. But the three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one students is what we ended up with, which is fifty-five more than I reported last time. So we're we're heading in the right direction. And again, from a financial risk perspective, we're in really good shape for the fall and and we're already transitioning to work on spring and spring, summer and next fall to to try to get our numbers headed in the in the right direction. In terms of grants and external funding, earlier this week, we received news that the Tech Hub grant that Gonzaga led the effort on, found out that that was funded for Phase One, which is half a million dollars. That that is spread among about thirty different partners, so nobody's getting rich on that. That is a, the intent of that is to provide funding to to build out the plan and then allow us to compete for Phase Two, which is somewhere between sixty-five and seventy-five million dollars, depending on the number of wards. So sixty-five, seventy-five million dollars, we're talking real, you know, change for the, an opportunity for change in the community. So we're working through the process, so, sorry. We we also received word that the C Campus Grant that we submitted for due as Department of Education was for childcare and we we were not funded on that. But we are still working to implement the one point three million in funding that we did receive to upgrade and improve the equipment for career and technical education programs from the Idaho Division of Career and Technical Education. So one point three million dollars requires us to buy that stuff, get it installed, get it set up and then and working and have it reimbursements filed by March. and then, and working, and have it, reimbursements filed by March. There's a lot to do on top of a already busy time of year, so, so we're, but we're on track to accomplish all that by March of '24. I have said I'd provide vaccine status updates, no changes from last time. I will say that our internal waiver program has been implemented and is meeting the needs of our students. Campus security, there are, the, the campus security audit is supposed to be completed by the first of November, so we'll have the report by the November Board Meeting. They are running a little bit behind, but we should have that, that, the final report done by the November Board Meeting. There was a question raised by some folks that sent in an email to the Board email, question raised about when are we doing active shooter drills and other training? And there was, there were a couple of trainings that got canceled. They were scheduled during really awkward times shortly after the four students at U of I were murdered, not appropriate time to do an active shooter drill, and then one other time in February. That has been rescheduled for early November, so we'll have our next drill in early November. And the other question was about our security officer training, and they are required to have professional development training on conflict resolution and de-escalation as, prior to being hired, and then we provide them opportunities for professional development training, and it's part of their annual review process. So that's, that's both ongoing. On campus, we continue to work with implementation of our new Idaho Launch Program, great program established by our, by our state government to support our students. We met with all of the Region One counselors at a luncheon here on Monday. There, it was a very nice meeting, large turnout. Our team presented their analysis on how to maximize their tuition support, how do, how do we help them inform their students on maximizing their tuition dollars that are provided by the state? And a big part of that is community college. It really makes a big difference in making their tuition dollars go farther. The luncheon was well attended, and the presentation was very well received, and based on the feedback, we're planning to do another session in the near future, probably early December or January. And then to, to make sure that the CTE students and faculty and the faculty from K-Tech are informed, we're hosting another special session at the Parker Center on November ninth to capture the CTE folks. Sort of more good news, NIC was just recently ranked by an organization called Intelligent.com as being the best community college in Idaho. And I'd say, generally speaking, college ranking systems are not exactly the most reliable tool as an indicator of quality, but given where we are in the accreditation process and all that, I think it's, we have room to celebrate being recognized by any major organization that recognizes us as being the best. So hats off to all the faculty and crew. Make that happen.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
And then a special note about a faculty member, Carla Mitchell, received the General Education Innovation Innovative Educator Award for Excellence in Teaching General Education, specifically in the area of mathematical ways of knowing. And so that was a state-level recognition, so it's, it's great to have our faculty recognized at the state level, and that was an event they hosted here as part of a general education review here. And then in general topics, nonprofit membership, I presented a listing of college-level nonprofit memberships last time. Was asked to go back and look at all of the nonprofit memberships. It's, it's a pretty exhaustive list, as we heard about in public comment. It's taken a bit of time to pull that together, I hope to have that done by the November meeting. In terms of performing arts, you heard Joe Jacoby mention the Pride vs. Prejudice. That's a, it's a play created by NIC, an NIC student, James Thrasher. It's based on the novel Pride and Prejudice by Jane Austen. It's going to be performed starting tomorrow night at 7:30 in Schuler Auditorium, Schuler Performing Arts Center. It'll be on the 26th, 27th, and 28th at 7:30 PM, and then there'll be a matinee on the 29th at 2:30. Should be lots of fun, and again, great recognition of one of our students who has written this play and got it produced, and it's, it's supposed to be pretty good. I haven't seen it yet. Some big news in athletics, just today, our women's soccer team tied Walla Walla, and this was their final regular season game, and the tying of Walla Walla puts us in the playoffs. So we look forward to the Lady Cardinals advancing in the soccer tournament. Our men's basketball game, starting in two minutes. They're hosting a scrimmage tonight against Whitworth University in Christensen Gym. Now, that's, again, that's a university, so we have a two-year school going up against a four-year university. I'm not sure if that'll make a difference or not, but we'll, we'll see how that gets played out. The SWAC Council of Presidents, so we're moving into the Scenic West Athletic Conference, or SWAC. The Council Presidents has set a meeting for Thursday, which is tomorrow afternoon, with the head of the NJCAA, Chris Parker, to look at district realignments. They've done some analysis of the scope and the distances, geographic distances involved now that we're members, and the comparison that they gave was, we basically go from, if you put us on the East Coast, basically go from Canada to Florida, and that's a, that's a pretty big region for community colleges, so there's, there's some potential that we might, there might be some realignments in SWAC. Now, I'll find out more tomorrow and let everybody know what we discover. They have also requested an in-person meeting that's tentatively scheduled for November 4th at the College of Southern Nevada that I expect to attend. And also, finally, we have been working with Representative Jordan Redman to pull together legislative representatives for a workshop before they head down to Boise. We haven't done it in a couple of years, and he's been very helpful in pulling that together. I texted with him, I don't call him, I texted with him, texted with him yesterday, and he said he's got, I think, fifteen legislators that have committed, and so we'll meet with them. It's currently scheduled for November 13th, and what we're trying to do is get us set up as a working dinner at Emory's, so we can showcase the great work that the students do at Emory's, which is our little lab, cook, you know, our restaurant lab in the Headland Building, and it's supposed to start around five, so please mark that on your calendars and make yourselves available, and more information to come on that as it develops. And that concludes my report.
Is there any questions from trustees? Nope. Okay, moving to the next enrollment update. Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce Tammy Haft?
Sure. Tammy Haft is coming to the podium, and, you know, it's, while we're still down around seven percent from last year, as I said, the, more students are taking more classes, and so our revenues are flat even though the numbers are down, and this represents a huge amount of work by the staff and faculty to pull this off. There were about thirty people in our enrollment and recruiting meeting that, that really worked to streamline processes, get marketing material out, and really changed the way we do business, and so Tammy is prepared to show us the results of that.
Thank you, Dr. Swain. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees, community members, colleagues, and students. As Nick mentioned, my name is Tammy Haft. I'm the Dean of Enrollment Services, and it's a pleasure to be with you this evening to provide a very high-level overview of our fall enrollment based on our October 15th census date. First, I want to take a minute to share our reporting structure with you. I am one of five deans who reports to Interim Provost Duman, the Directors of Admission and Recruitment, and Financial Aid, along with the Registrar, the Regional Outreach Center Manager in Sandpoint, and the Assistant to the Dean, report to me. Like to talk about our year-over-year comparison. This fall, our official headcount, identified by the red column on the right, is 3,981, as Dr. Swain mentioned, and our full-time equivalency is 2,322. To calculate full-time equivalency, we divide the total number of credits by fifteen. While both numbers show a decline from last fall, I am happy to report that our many recruiting and outreach efforts over the summer were successful. The fall budget was built on 34,527 credits. We were able to generate an additional 313 credits for a total of 34,840. Sarah Garcia will share more in her report about the positive impact this has had on our budget. Next, let's look at the breakout of our headcount. The majority of our students, fifty-two percent, or 2,068, are pursuing academic transfer programs. Thirty-two percent, or 1,279, are part of our dual-credit program. Eleven percent, or 420, are enrolled in career technical education programs at the Parker Center or on the main campus, and five percent, or 214, are non-degree. When I compared these percentages to last year, there were minimal changes. CTE and non-degree represent the same portion of the pie. Academic transfer decreased one percent, and dual increase, dual credit increased one percent. I will be back November 20th, 2023, with the full fall enrollment report, and that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm going to take over for a few minutes, so, while Greg's gone, and he'll be back. So that was the enrollment update, so next we need the CTE update.
Right, so Vicky Isaacson, you've, you've become familiar with her. She'll, she'll show you a line and block chart, so you can see where she now falls in the organization. On the agenda, it says Erlene Pickett, and Erlene Pickett handles health science, or sorry, our health professions, and Erlene has a medical condition that prevents her from being in attendance tonight, so we will cover her material at a later date, but Vicky will cover the remainder of the CTE update.
Good evening, trustees, President Swain, faculty, staff, and members of the community. As Dr. Swain mentioned, I'm Vicky Isaacson. I'm the Dean of Workforce Education. Tonight, I'll be sharing just a very brief update with you about the career and technical education programs that I supervise. I supervise five divisions or departments, our adult education or GED programs, the Center for New Directions, our career and technical professional programs, trades and industries, and our workforce training center. To share a little bit with you as to how our programs are funded, CTE funding is, funding is funneled to us through the State Division of Career and Technical Education. We receive just over 6.5 million dollars for faculty, staff, maintenance, and operations. In addition, we receive Perkins Five funding for program improvement in the amount of just over $170,000 that can be utilized for equipment, travel, and supplies. Our community impact, we, our enrollments for this year in fall of 2023 in trades and industries is 137 students. There's 256 that are in our career and technical professional programs. While our reporting system shows that we have a total of 420 students in all of our CTE programs, as Tammy Haft mentioned, that number is definitely higher if you consider the students who are taking prerequisite courses and have not yet applied for or have been accepted into a program, and Erlene will be talking about that more, especially in relation to the health professions and nursing programs. We serve these numbers with 21 full-time, 16 part-time, and eight dual-credit faculty, eight full-time, and three part-time staff. These are the programs that we serve through trades and industries. These programs listed here are all available at our Parker Technical Center. And the programs you see here for career and technical professional programs are all available on our main campus. What we're working on right now are increasing the dual-credit opportunities for career and technical education. We're partnering with K-Tech to offer some additional opportunities that are, have not yet been available for K-Tech students with dual-credit. We're also looking at revamping some program schedules. For the first time ever, we have a spring start coming up in our machining program, so we'll be able to offer two starts for that program each year. We're working on aligning non-credit to credit wherever we possibly can, and we're looking at how we can increase marking, marketing opportunities so we can increase the enrollment of the CTE programs. That's all I have to share for you tonight. Do you have any questions?
I'm gonna, if I may, just say a couple of things. You all saw the report, I guess it was in May, when Vicky did the update on the Workforce Training Center, and Vicky is really good at growing programs. She's, over the past two and a half years, has grown, year over year, the Workforce Training Center programs by about twenty percent a year. And so she's making the changes that I think are probably long overdue at the Parker Center to start that same kind of growth at the Parker Center. So it's going to be some, some growing pains figuring that out, helping Pat, who is now the interim director there, adapt and change so we better meet the needs and increase enrollments there by, you know, start the twenty percent growth out there as well.
Sounds like exciting times.
It's always exciting here. Okay, so next up is Sarah Garcia is going to introduce our first finance update of, in our recurring reports series, and so for all the accountants in the room, you can get excited. For the rest of us, we enjoy the wonderful presentation. And I'll say, Sarah just got through a, I think her ninth audit, eighth or ninth audit is about to wrap up.
Ninth.
Ninth audit. She has a record of eight audits, previous audits, without comment, and that means that it was a clean audit, hundred percent clean, so. Making sure that the money goes where it's supposed to go and it's not wasted is, it really falls in her hands, her and her staff, and they do a remarkable job with that, and so Sarah, take it away.
Okay, well, for those of you who aren't numbers geeks, I will try to make, make it as interesting as I possibly can. For those of you who are number geeks, sit back and relax. So I want to start off with an org chart, as everyone has been doing, so I have four, five main areas that report to me most of all. The biggest one is the Office of Finance and Business, that's run by two managers, Josh Gittle and Sandra Jaco. We basically take care of all the money. Money that goes in and money that comes, comes in and money that goes out. I also have Gary Stark, who's our physical plant director. He oversees maintenance, custodial, landscape, mail and copy transportation, and building projects. He's got a large job as well. Also reporting to me is Steve McGrady. He oversees auxiliary services, which is essentially the financial operations of the dorm housing commission, so the Student Rec Center, the dorm, and the Student Union Building. And he also oversees our event services team, who is the fabulous team who sets this room up for us every month. Also, Head Start, Beth Ann Fuller reports to me, as well as Sage Stoddard, who runs the area agency on aging. So I am going to talk about the Financial Composite Index. The Financial Composite Index is a gold standard for assessing the health of colleges and universities. This figure is used by both accreditors and, starting in 2021, iPads, the Integrated Post-Secondary Educational Data System started requiring us to report the composite financial index score to them. The total score is a weighted average index of four different elements of your financial statements. We take that data from our annual audited financial statements, that's the basis for our calculation, so we do the calculation once a year, once our audit has been completed. The scale for the financial, Financial Composite Index goes from a negative one to a positive And our scores, as you can see, reflect the strong health of our institution. And our scores, as you can see, reflect the strong health of our institution over time, with last year's score being at a five point nine nine out of ten. One element of the Financial Composite Index is the primary reserve ratio. This ratio is intended to address whether we have adequate and sufficient resources to support our mission. The calculation compares available and easily convertible assets, i.e. cash or receivables, to our total expenditures. So how much, do we have enough cash to pay our expenditures? And it also shows us how long we can function using reserves. The benchmark ratio is is forty percent. Our ratio is seventy-four point eight eight, or seventy-five percent. That means we have reserves to cover almost nine months' worth of operations, based on our current operating expenditure level. The key factors that impact this ratio are the use of assets for capital projects. So you will see in future slides that when we do things like the Parker Building or the Meyer Health Science Edition, that it impacts these ratios as we go through. The next and only other ratio I will talk about is the Financial Composite Index, net operating revenues. So the net operating revenues show if we're living within our available resources, are we living within our budget? Institutions need to generate surplus over long periods of time as a way to reinvest in future initiatives. The recommended ratio for this, the recommended average for this ratio is between two and four percent. To calculate this ratio, we take our net income for the year and divide it by our revenues. For for NIC in twenty twenty-two, our percentage was six point seven percent, on a benchmark of two. So as as mentioned by Dr. Swain, this is not just about having extra money, it's about having, how we manage our money. We are very conservative with our budget, and we manage our budget very carefully. If we stop doing that, these numbers will will fall. The next thing that is a large measure for financial people is unrestricted net assets. So essentially, that's our fund balance, our savings, that doesn't have restrictions placed on it by other people. For instance, Head Start is a restricted asset because we are given that money specifically to support Head Start, we can't use it for anything else. These are assets that we can use for whatever we need to do from an operational standpoint. It's not a savings account, it's not cash. So that's something important to remember, there was some confusion a few years ago that this was cash, this is not cash. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum of no less than two months' worth of general fund operating expenses in its unrestricted fund balance. In twenty twenty-two, at our current level of expenditures, our fund balance represents about three months' worth of total operating expenses for the total college. So we're, we're okay, but we're, we're still not that far ahead of of average. And again, careful management will impact this dramatically.
Did you say three months, is that the translating of the thirty-five percent?
Yes, thirty-five percent of a year.
Would be, how many months?
Three-ish.
Okay, thank you. And and that's, if you go back a slide.
Four, four months.
Four months.
Four, did I say four?
No, it should be four, a third of a year is four months.
Okay.
And and then twenty-five percent would be twenty-five percent of the year for this current year.
Yeah, sorry, I should know better, I'm a numbers person, but.
That's fine, just hoping to interpret it, thank you.
So as I was talking about, that our unrestricted fund balance has two elements to it. Here we have your, the board-designated capital investment reserve, as well as the undesignated fund balance. So we are required to include that capital investment reserve balance as part of our unrestricted fund balance because it is not restricted in the way something like Head Start funds are are restricted. It is designated, it it requires board action, but it is, can be spent on whatever it needs to be spent on. So that is included in our total. If you look at the the chart, you can see, for instance, in two thousand seventeen, the gray portion of the unrestricted fund balance was rather small. That's right after we built the Parker Center and spent a big portion of our capital investment reserve doing that. Same thing happened in twenty, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two with the building of the Meyer extension.
The combined number would be our total reserve then?
Correct, and this is in millions because it got really busy with bigger numbers.
Now, we we spent eight point seven millions early for the Meyer Health expansion, is that twenty-one to twenty-two then?
It's 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 kind of spread between twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, that project took a lot longer than we anticipated. Okay. I'm I'm going to switch gears a little bit here and talk about physical assets. Oh, yes, sir.
I have two questions.
Okay.
One, does this contain, what do you call it, deferred taxes, where we've decided not to tax?
No, sir, it does not.
Foregone taxes.
Foregone.
Foregone taxes, so we actually could, if there was some emergency, we could go ahead and do that even.
Yes.
That's not a whole lot of money though in one year.
No, there, the legislature a couple of years ago put in some rather strong boundaries about how much you can use of your foregone taxes and what you can use them for in any given year.
It's like a quarter of a million.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, it's limited now.
Yes.
Okay, and then question number two, how do we rank using these measurements against the other community colleges in Idaho, do you know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head because that information is hard to find on their websites, I have to dig for it, but I will dig for it, and I meant to do that before this evening, but.
Because my impression is that we're actually, as a school, in pretty good shape, as long as we continue to be disciplined.
That would be, I would consider that an accurate statement.
Now, I'm just going to poll our board members. If our foregone taxes is only a quarter of a million that we could add to our reserves essentially to pay for payroll, because they changed the rules, I don't need to ask you right now, but is, since they did change the rules, would it be beneficial, would this board be interested in approving foregone taxes? Or seeing an argument before or against foregone taxes to increase our reserves? Or is that not interested? It's more complicated than yes or no, we used to get called by the state quite regularly because we have a very large foregone taxes balance already. But since the state changed the laws on us during my tenure as a trustee, I believe, it may be beneficial to trustee.
Well, the the way I would phrase that question is, is it worth the time to put in to do an analysis so we could then look at the advantages and disadvantages and the numbers involved?
So I guess that is.
We can, we can do that and come back with a report.
Absolutely, I would suggest that that we spend some time in a budget workshop this this fiscal year with with new members on the board, spend a little time discussing what that looks like and what what the options are, and and giving you an opportunity to get some clarity.
Okay, we can bring that back.
Yeah.
Trustee Van Dujie.
Well, since there's not an immediate need, I don't think there's a rush, so if that was appropriate, Sarah, for the timing, then that might make sense to look at it then.
It would be.
But I don't think that that's something that needs to be addressed at this time.
I think the ship has sailed for this year then, okay. So just in the future, come.
Absolutely. Okay. So next is is NIC owns a hundred and thirty-six acres. We also manage and maintain almost nine hundred thousand square feet of buildings. So this includes the main campus, the Ed Corridor subdivision, which is, you know, the former mil site, that's just adjacent here. It also includes the Parker Technical Education Center land and building, as well as Riverbend and workforce training in post-falls. The first time I put this all on one slide, it it kind of surprised me, so it's it's a lot.
You, trustee Van Dujie.
No, I was going to wait till she had her natural break. I was wanting to see, because you're looking two places. Sarah, two questions if I may. I thought we had a full forty acres out at the Parker Center, so I didn't realize we were a little bit less than that. I thought it was a ten and a ten and a twenty, kind of how it all accumulated out. And how much of that property do we still have leased out that's being farmed actively?
None.
There's none.
They stopped.
None.
Okay, I did, I wasn't sure, that's why I was curious, thank you.
They they stopped that in preparation for the.
The law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
Yep, okay, I didn't know if that had been done yet.
Yeah, it was, I think we we gave them, it took ninety days' notice, if I recall.
I I believe the end of that ninety-day notice period was in February of this year.
Correct, that's, that's what I understand.
So we're in that process right now then?
No, it's already done.
It's already done.
We gave them ninety days' notice in November, and that concluded in February, ninety, November of last year.
Prior.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it, they were, the lease was over in February of twenty-three.
All right, thank you.
I also have put on the bottom of the slide the very short list of leased properties that the college currently has. This is of note, about ten years ago, that was a much longer list. We have made a concerted effort to utilize the facilities that we currently have to the best of our ability to minimize the amount of reliance and the expense of paying for leases off-campus. So currently, we have the Standpoint Center, which is the Pine Street Annex up in Standpoint, the Post Academy, and we rent some space for them out at the Riverbend Commerce Park, which if we get funded for our capital request, we will be able to terminate that lease. And then the Area Agency on Aging and Head Start both lease their spaces.
Before November thirteenth, could the Area Agency on Aging and Head Start, what about, we're just, I mean, maybe all four, the heads of these agencies kind of express their interest or not interest of moving to an owned building versus a leased building? Sometimes they're happy, sometimes they're not.
They're they're all, the the Head Start is at multiple locations. Area Agency of Aging, I'm, I don't know.
They recently moved into a space that they really enjoy being in, and it's closer for them to the services that they provide and the centers that they support. But yes, I will, I will ask the question.
Because just, just to plan for, it would just, to engage at a state level on their behalf or anything, it just, that's what I care for, supporting them.
I will, I will make a request. Okay, so staying on the subject of buildings, right now, we're working through the first phase of funding coming from the state, from the Division of Public Works for deferred maintenance. About a couple of years ago, there was a report requested at the governor's level to see how much deferred maintenance we had statewide on state-owned buildings, and the number was astronomical. And it it, because we just, no one has funding to 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 complete the necessary deferred maintenance that needs to happen every single year. So there has been an effort to allocate money to all of the state agencies who own buildings to improve their facility condition index. So this is one of the ones that lower numbers are better, it's like golf, so the lower the number, the better. With our money, we have used, we have used it to prioritize HVAC systems, roof repair and replacement, elevator upgrades, window replacements, and generators, very exciting stuff, but very important stuff from a standpoint of maintaining your buildings. The Division of Public Works actually is contracting with a third party to manage and execute these projects for us, and we use someone on campus as a go-between, between our workers and and that third party. So this isn't the coolest colored slide, but it essentially, this is a slide that comes, this information comes out of a database that we use to manage our facilities. So we evaluate our facilities on a regular basis to see what needs to be done with them. In twenty twenty-three, our condition index was twelve percent. Fair is ten percent, so we're a little, little over, a little worse than fair. In order to, if we did nothing, in twenty thirty-seven, our facilities would be in critical condition, yes, sir.
I think it was twenty twenty-two, we got a lot of money for deferred maintenance projects, so twenty twenty-three still were at that level.
So we're, we're, this is taking a lot longer to happen, the mechanics of it, because it's such a large deal. So like I said, we're working on phase one right now, which is the very first set of funding, and that's what we're working on allocating to projects right now.
Wonderful, thank you.
It would take funding of about four million dollars, and I have to apologize because I don't know if that's annually or over the next fifteen years, I'm guessing annually, in order for us to get to that ten percent goal for our facility condition. So it's, it's expensive to maintain facilities. So we're very thankful for the money coming from the state to help us with that. Okay, so next is, I'd like to talk about our budget process. I'm sorry, this is hard, a little hard to read, it's a lot of information to try to put in one place. But if we talk about where we are today in both our internal and our state budget processes, earlier this month, I went down to Boise and presented in front of the Permanent Building Fund for the request that we made for our EVOC Training Center. That request was actually due to the Division of Public Works in August. That request that was due in August, that I presented in October, will be heard by J-FAC in January, hopefully approved and allocated in March, so that we can start planning and thinking about it in July. So this is a long process. So while we are in the fall of every year, working with the state on the upcoming budget process, we don't start working on our own internal budget process until January. So in January, we're working on establishing our budget guidelines. In February, we share the guidelines and templates with our managers. In March, we roll up the budget and prioritize our requests. In April, we finalize our request and present it to you fine people, the Board of Trustees. In May, we adjust the request if needed, based on the first reading and the second reading, and we perform the second reading. Then in June, I basically take the approved budget and get it uploaded into our accounting system. However, at the same time, J-FAC hasn't given us a final number of what, of what they're going to be giving us for state CTE, for the state general fund allocation, and for Division of Public Works. So those conversations are going on in Boise while we're trying to build our budget internally. So it's a little bit of a juggling game. What I I do want you to take note of is June. So in June, we just get our budget approved, we're already starting on next year's budget. So as soon as we get our FY twenty-five budget approved here locally, the very next month, the state is calling me and saying, you need to start thinking about line items for FY twenty-six. So there's a long lead time for a lot of these processes, and I just hope to help you understand some of that and how we have to juggle sometimes two fiscal years at once.
Sometimes three.
Sometimes three, yes, sir.
And I don't know whether to ask this question of Dr. Swain, or probably both of you. So you're working on a strategic plan, how, have you, are you able, because of the lead times, to mesh these two items?
We will, so be, the the phase one of the strategic plan, as we we've worked with a contractor already, we had several meetings, is phase one to really get the big picture items, we asked them to to do that by April. And so it it's going to come together right at the last minute, but hopefully we have a good plan. And if we have a good planning process, we'll have a pretty good idea of the needs so that we can prioritize resources and have that reflected in the budget request that we build the budget on.
So you're, you've put together a process to make sure we don't lose out, so to speak.
Yeah, well, so there's, there's two things, there's one is building the budget internally and allocating our resources, but the second thing is what we're going to ask the state for, so both of those are happening simultaneously, yeah.
And you're meshing that with the strategic planning process?
Correct.
Excellent.
Could you go on to the next piece? So the next piece is just a very high-level overview of our tuition, our revenue picture, and then I'm gonna talk about expenses, again, very briefly. So I'm comparing year-to-date, so just the three months, July, August, and September, this year versus last year. So interestingly enough, our total revenue year-over-year is less than a hundred thousand dollars difference between the two fiscal years. There's a change in the allocation of, or the.
Source.
Source, thank you, source of the revenue. I will note that the tuition budget, we budgeted to be down in tuition revenue this year because of our accreditation situation. I want to echo what Tammy Haff said, and also what Dr. Swain said earlier, that when we heard in early July that we were gonna continue and be able to offer accredited classes in the fall, there was a full court press done by a very large group of people to make sure that we got as darn close to that budget as we could possibly get. And the team worked extremely hard, and we got within one percent of our budgeted revenue goal for tuition. And that is outstanding. And I guess the other piece I would note is the other, the yellow that's at the very top of the chart, is mostly due to interest income. Because we do have cash in the bank from the Capital Investment Reserve, and the interest rates have gone up, as we all know, rather high, which is good for us right now. Okay? This is my last slide. And you can see, because it's very dense, I did not put a bunch of numbers on it, so I'll speak to them, but you also should have gotten in your packet a set of financial statements that provided the same information. Again, the numbers are very comparable year-over-year. The largest portion of our expenses are personnel, which is the big blue bar at the bottom. Sixty-eight percent of our total expenses year-to-date in fiscal year twenty-three were for personnel this year, that's sixty-five. And a lot of that is due to those twenty positions that were holding vacant for this year. The only other category that I would say had any kind of significant change is the yellow, oh, sorry, not yellow, light blue, light blue, it's like third, below the green and above the yellow. That is the category for services. Those services include professional services as well as insurance. So the cost of our legal situations with our lawsuits, as well as the increased cost of insurance and our professional services bills have changed that number from seven percent of our total expenditures from FY twenty-three to eleven percent of our expenditures year-to-date for that category as a percentage of the total. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Could you compare the grant and aid numbers? What's the grant and aid for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four?
I don't have the actual figures.
Not much change.
Not much change. The, one of the differences to note with grant and aid is that last year, we still had HERF money available, CARES money that we were giving to students, so that was reflected in our grant and aid number. We'll see that as we go through the year, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I think it changed one percent, if I recall.
Yeah. It's, for, through this period, it's one percent.
Trustee Banducci.
Yeah, I was just looking for an update on the implementation of the, of what the board has passed for the budget, and it's been voted and approved regarding the athletics, and particularly since we've talked about the men's basketball team tonight in the exhibition game against Whitworth. Are we fully, are we fully funding the men's and women's basketball this season, as agreed upon, if they've had to rush into the independent status and getting them their meal money and the rest of the money, as they've been cannibalizing their other funds, whether it be from the Booster Club accounts that they had and other such things? Have we hit that mark where we're properly funding them and giving them all the money that was directed to be given to them? Where are we at on that as a state?
What was asked for was increase to go full scholarships, full room and board, and a flight home, but that was for the new recruits that started in November. The rest of the funding, we are doing as needed, but there hasn't, we already had allocated an additional one point five million for that from salary salvage. So for this year, I think we're fine. There were some issues about, about how, what was funded and with the Booster Club, but I think we're on a good footing and continue to check back with the athletic department.
Okay, because there was two meetings, and there was the agreement that we would plus up for the men's and women's basketball season and have, make sure that their needs were met this year.
Yep.
If I may, trustee.
Well, they were giving them all the meal money and everything, per the level of the NJCAA at this time.
Trustee Banducci, to answer your question, we have not denied any requests for funding from either of the basketball teams to meet the requirements that we put forth for them. So it is, the coaches are managing that situation, and I meet weekly with Sean Noel, and if he has an issue where the coaches aren't receiving funding, he tells me.
Okay.
All right, well, that's all easily verifiable, so I appreciate the answer.
Thank you for your presentation. We are moving, which one, that was a finance update, and Sarah Gersi, I think you're coming back with the strategic plan.
I don't, I don't think she has any update on that, other than the fact that we have contracted with them and had our first series of meetings. And so probably have a more thorough update at our next board meeting when we have their, we're continuing to just get the relationship started with our contractor, and should have, I think I'm meeting with them next week. Sarah and Sherri Simkins are the chairs of the Strategic Planning Committee, and they have met a couple of times already with the Strategic Planning Company, and even Debbie DeThomas has met with them as well. So I think we're on a, off to a good start, and we'll continue to update the board as more information. Sarah, if you have anything to add?
I would say we are anticipating a first site visit by, by the team that's helping us out at the end of November, where they would like to meet with various groups and get a pulse on where we are. We have been talking with Debbie DeThomas in how to appropriately engage the board in this process, and my guess is there will be a request for meetings with the board at that time, when they are here on site.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? I have something. Trustee Wagner, okay. Last meeting, the board expressed a desire to see kinda the results of the RFP with the recommendations from individual participants that hasn't been provided to the board yet.
I said I was not going to provide that. The recommendation, the review, and that is not, that is done by the internal committee, and it's not something that I want to share with the board. I've already shared with you the four finalists and the matrix. That's what I would, that's what I said I would share, and that's what was shared. So you have an opportunity to review that, but the, how the, it was, they were reviewed by six, fifteen or sixteen members of the expanded president's cabinet, and all of those folks participated in that and scored them. So it was, it was a wide range of folks evaluating them. And that's something, I did not access that when I scored it, and I don't think it's appropriate to share with the board.
Okay, so the board has an oversight role, and the board is communicating that we wanna see that information.
I'm sorry, but no. No. I'm not providing that, I don't think it's appropriate.
Trustee Wagner.
Which one of the, you gave us four that we looked at, right? And then which one did you select?
Collective Brain Trust.
Okay.
I think that's the right name, right? Collaborative Brain Trust.
This is an informational item, okay. Board Policy Subcommittee Update. Mike, trustee Wagner, and trustee Zimmerman.
Right. And I'll start off here, and then I'm sure Terry will want to add a few things. Today was somewhat of a momentous day. I'll need to get closer to this, so everybody can hear. Let me make my notes here. As you know, the, some of the policies have been very old, and normally, they're updated fairly commonly, or fairly short intervals, like three years, three to five years. And some of these were like, I understand, twenty years old. So NWCCU was very concerned about that. So as, in terms of addressing their concerns, we've been looking at the policies. We've spent a lot of time doing that, along with President Swain, Terry, myself, and Debbie DeThomas. So we're excited today to say that we've looked at all of them. We've made the changes that are required, we've added some additional policies. We will have one additional one for the board next time, a policy on creating policies, because historically, the college administration policies process and the board policy process were combined. It's not, we decided that's not appropriate, so we split those into two pieces. The college administration process, folks are there working on theirs. We've, ours is ready to go for first reading next, at the next meeting. So that's pretty good. We looked, Dr. Swain had talked about a membership policy. We took a look at that and really decided that that is an administration procedure, and we really don't need a policy at this point. Also.
Say that again? Like a nonprofit membership, so you're not working on a policy for that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, I will just add a little bit to that. The committee discussed that at length this morning. We decided that it's an operational issue. We also decided it's in the president's report. And lastly, it's regulated through statute, so we found it not necessary to produce a policy on that measure.
Regulated through statute. What statute?
Yeah, expand on that.
Yeah, how, okay, this is a legal interpretation of statute, right? And I take it our lawyer, the NIC's legal counsel, was engaged on this topic?
We had no legal representation, but we had the, we had Debbie DeThomas there, yes.
So you had no lawyer interpreting statutes, wonderful.
There is no other community college that has a policy on memberships.
Okay, so you're telling me, the Board of Trustees, you don't want a policy on nonprofit participations?
We could not find one example in any community college where that policy existed. Not one. Not one. It is operational control of the president. It is, as Ken mentioned, is a report that goes before the board in Florida, but it is not a policy. The president supervises that, manages that according to the guidelines and the budget, and reports to the board annually on the memberships. That's the way they do it in Florida. There is no policy on it in any other community college.
Just as a, as a question, what is the Idaho code that you're quoting about the statute?
I'm not quoting a specific code. We have guidance throughout all of the statutes on the memberships.
What we can expend funds for.
Okay, because I'm not aware of any code, in Idaho code, that speaks to what you're talking about, so, but you just said that it was in the code, so.
Legal use of public funds is what she was talking about.
Okay, this is, this is wrong.
No, it's not.
I don't know if it's right or wrong, I'm just trying to ask what the Idaho code.
No, I am tired of taxpayer money going to opaque nonprofits, nonprofits. Okay. Dr. Swain, will you give this lady, and this is her second time interrupting, please ask her to leave?
She's leaving.
Okay, is she gonna leave? Is security gonna come? Why do I have to get involved?
You don't have to get involved, she's leaving.
She's not leaving, I'm watching her.
Stuart is escorting out.
Is this lady gonna get a warning?
So warned.
Greg, my question was just, what is the code in Idaho being referenced? That's all.
Exactly.
If there's no code, then there's no code. But if there's a code, then it should be known. Idaho code is basically a Harvard set of books, five-foot shelf of books. There's not that much code, but if there is code, it'd be nice to know what it is. I was not asked to look into it, so, I mean, if they, if they want legal advice on Idaho code, I'm sure I would have been asked, but she said she didn't. So the code must be so easy to read and so plain language, that there's no reason to ask an attorney to interpret it, which is fine. Good with that, I just wanna know what it is.
We said it was regulated through statute. I may, but may have misspoke when I said code, but I meant statute. And Debbie DeThomas gave us a lot of guidance on that. We've also stated there is no precedent for this in any community college in our country.
Okay, I hear that. I'm also a taxpayer, and I'm tired of my taxpayer monies going to nonprofits, and they turn it around and use it for political gain. And I can name names. Trustee Banducci, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, if the crowd has another outburst, I recommend we clear the room. If they can't be courteous, and they're gonna be disrespectful and disruptive of the meeting, you have the power to clear the room.
I do wish security would be standing by to hand out warnings, that would help maintain order.
Secondly.
Dr. Swain, I'm.
They're standing by.
No, they're not, they're taking plenty of time giving warnings. Trustee Banducci.
All right. Secondly, the board has overall authority over the college, oversight, defining whatever you want is policy level versus procedure level, policy versus operational, whatever you wanna say. But at the end of the day, the board is what's accountable to the community publicly, and it's appropriate that the board knows who the college has affiliations with and/or what memberships that we have. So I guess my question is, if we're not gonna have a policy on that, then how are we being apprised of that, or how are we being made aware of it? We talked about that, that's an annual report. It's a report I will provide that says.
We, we're assuming, I don't know the code issue, I don't remember that discussion, but we're assuming that there'll be some other mechanism through existing reporting, et cetera, that is required, so we know what's going on. But that the correct mechanism is not a policy.
So you say end of year, once a year, is that, end of year, is that December? Is that June? Is it end of fiscal year, is it end of calendar year? What are we talking about here? It'll be once a year, I think is adequate. They renew periodically throughout the year, so, you know, we'll add that to the recurring reports and make that a recurring report. But it was not, it hasn't been raised, we gotta figure out what an appropriate time for that is, based on the schedule, but it will be provided.
Yeah, it's, it's the mechanism that's the issue. But it should not be, we couldn't figure out how to make it, I couldn't find out, frankly, because I worked on it and tried to write one, to have a policy for that. So it needs to be a different mechanism, so that the board is, one, aware, and then, two, can have input to the process if there's a concern.
All right, sir.
Trustee Banducci.
Here we are at the end of October. If we do not have a briefing on this by the end of December, I would like to at least have the proposal of when we are gonna have the briefing, and how you're gonna synchronize the timing. Granted, things may come, things may go, and there may be different start and stop dates, but at some point, you gotta just pick a clock.
Absolutely.
At a time. It's every September, or it's every January, or it's every something, and give us what that looks like.
Absolutely.
I'd like to have that by the end of the year, so we can know what to expect going forward.
Absolutely, I mean, we just decided this today. I will get it on to the, we're gonna do some research on it, figure out what it entails, and we'll get it on the recurring reports for your review, absolutely.
Absolutely. No issues with that.
And then I need to continue on here. I've got some additional.
Trustee Wagner.
Okay, so new policy 20.0114. I alluded to that a little bit. That's the new policy for policies. We decided we did not need a procedure. And that is the one that's ready for next first reading. And then, again, the administration will mesh theirs with ours as they, as we get, once we get ours approved, then they'll go ahead and get theirs approved. And then actually, we're looking at changing the numbering system. It's confusing where their numbers are interspersed with our numbers. And so they're planning on, once we get things settled, going through and renumbering theirs. So on the website, et cetera, it's clear.
So the, the board's internal policies will be all the 02.01 series? And the colleges will be 02.02?
Right. So, and then the other thing is in the 2.0114, we make it a standing committee. And it meets as needed. Because today, there's no definition as to whether it's ad hoc or standing. There probably, I believe there are additional things we need to look at. Plus, the, in the 22.0114, we also have our, Kristin is going to add a, propose or put in something we can check for a schedule for the next three years. So we review all of them every three years, which is the additional thing that we have not gotten approved that NWCCU wants.
So one-third of the policies will be reviewed every year?
Right.
Over a three-year period.
So then there's a schedule and then, so then it's a discipline and a discipline in terms of getting it done.
But what you're doing is you're kind of updating the board on what we have done today with the subcommittee. We are bringing the number 14 to the next regular meeting for a first read. So all of these details you'll have access to when we bring it next month.
Right.
And did you also talk about the policy nine?
I alluded to the fact that we looked at the emeritus policy and decided not to change it at this time.
Okay.
That was the last one of the 10 that we originally had that NWCCU was concerned about. And so as a result of that.
All the policies have been reviewed.
All the policies have been reviewed. And so we have met that deliverable and we're giving them a status tonight that the, one that's left is, is in process and nearing completion. Because it's pretty straightforward. So you may have some issues, but it's pretty straightforward. We might even be able to do it on first reading. We'll see.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Something I must say for the record here. It's interesting how this has become such a, an issue of high import with the NWCCU and, and when, we've been evaluated by them many times over the years. And there were some trustees that were very long-term members. And yet, some of these board policies hadn't been updated in 20 years. So it's sort of ironic how it's all landed in our lap. And for four of you, you haven't even been on the board as more than a couple of years. And so I guess we're cleaning up the mess that's accumulated over all these years. So, I guess we'll do the job and we'll meet the requirement of NWCCU. But it's ironic that none of that was ever addressed in all the previous evaluations and the seven-year evaluation. And all the times, all the things that have gone on over the last however many years. And then here it is, suddenly this, this, this focus and this emphasis on it. But it's all right. It's been handed to us and I guess you guys are taking care of it and we'll get there.
Actually, we were pretty much, what they want, we're there now.
Yeah, I think.
We're there now.
It's, it is kind of strange. I agree, Mr. Banducci, I agree that why, why some of these policies have been outdated and never updated, why that became an issue this time, I can't explain it. But nevertheless, I'd say, you know, Mike and Terry have really put a lot of effort into getting it fixed. And so it's done.
It's, if I can quote Debbie back there. She and Ken also mentioned that. Why, that they typically do check and why didn't they check here? And so we ended up with 16 to 20 years' worth of work to do in a very short period of time.
But, but they also said, we probably have the best, most update, most updated policies of any board in the country.
Right.
Okay.
There's a, there's an upside to it.
This policy subcommittee does have a huge downside to where this discussion is happening behind closed doors where the public cannot see the formation of its policy.
We've had some of them in the public forum.
Which I appreciate. That's to avoid public meeting violations. And there's a balance between efficiency and transparency to optimize effectiveness. And I feel that this policy subcommittee needs to have the option to include more than just two trustees in forcing it into the open session. Not necessarily forcing it into the regular board meeting time period, but allowing all voices at the table to be heard. Because it sounds like an in-depth discussion on this occurred that I would have liked the public to observe and even been a part of.
We have brought the policies to the board for you all to review. And we have during meetings reviewed them at length. And we've taken them back to policy subcommittee, reviewed them again and brought them back. So we have gone full cycle and circle with each and every one of these, except for the last few.
Membership organization. This is our second outbreak.
She's clapping, come on.
No, we're trying to have a conversation.
Would you like us?
You cannot violate her First Amendment opportunity to express herself. She's not disrupting the meeting. Again, you're defending someone, the same person acting inappropriately.
A lot of people have been clapping and not clapping. Can we just keep on with our discussion, please, and not get derailed?
Board Chair, you weren't recognized to speak just now. Please wait.
Oh, well, you're not recognizing me or not recognizing me? You can't give me recognition.
I'm, I'm signaling for the board chair, please.
Well, this discussion has gone on without that sort of rigmarole.
Trustee Banducci, you're being recognized.
President Swain, that's the second time that you've inappropriately undercut the board chair's authority with someone from the audience acting inappropriately. That, that is not a good optic, sir. And I would ask you, please refrain from doing so.
I hear you. I disagree and I am not gonna violate the First Amendment rights. She's not disrupting the meeting by clapping.
While someone was talking and communicating with someone else up here on the dais, that clapping presented someone to be able to communicate and for someone to be able to hear that communication. So that's not a disruption in your definition, sir.
No, I think we can wait 10 seconds for the public to quiet down and then we can continue on without violating their First Amendment rights.
Art.
Yes.
For example.
Dr. Swain, there's, there's no First Amendment right to interrupt a meeting. Most people know that public meetings in Idaho, there's a time, place and manner for communication to the board. There was public comment. Ms. Born Paul made public comment before. There is no First Amendment right for either defamation, slander or interrupting a public meeting outside of the time, place and manner set by the board.
Thank you.
And so I think that's worthwhile to remember.
Noted. Thank you for your input.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Sir, that attitude.
Trustee Banducci, you can save it for the proper time.
John Mackenzie, when you get a minute, can I talk, please?
Trustee Zimmerman.
Thank you. You know, I'd just like to go back to what you were talking about earlier about our policies and how they haven't been reviewed in a very long time. So, you know, I'm not a big advocate for fixing something that's not broken. So I'm not saying that these things should have been fixed a long time ago, but I think it's good to recognize something good that this board has done, which has gone back and reviewed the policies. We brought them forward, so we're doing something good here. So let's just celebrate something positive. We have done something really positive. Trustee Wagner held this up today at our policy meeting. He felt very accomplished, as we all should, that we have really done some good work here. Can we just end this on a positive note? We'll bring something to you at the next meeting. If you want us to review the membership as a policy, we will review it again. I'm not sure that you'll be happy with the result.
I want to be part of the conversation and I want the public to observe.
Then make it so.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is the board would be fine with me working to produce a RFP or a, 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 external organization policy.
And I need to clarify something there. We were looking at it in terms of costs, et cetera, and the process. Are you saying that you were concerned about the type of organization?
I'm saying that I think it's the Coeur d'Alene City Council spends about $40,000 on a specific organization like Coeur d'Alene Economic Development Council. And I know North Idaho College spends about $15,000 on Coeur d'Alene Economic Development Council. And there's a massive push by numerous government entities to basically stop funding that organization. For reasons. And I'm saying that I think the board and the taxpayers should have a say on certain external relationships and some others that are not. Or, or, and there is a balance between threshold amounts, which is why I wrote an RFP policy to not always go to the board.
So that's not a policy on just organizations? That's a policy on where the money goes?
Where the money goes is what I've always talked about at these board meetings and I just not feel it's being heard. And I feel like as a trustee and a fiduciary of taxpayer money, I should have a say on where my taxpayer money goes. Sorry for my emotion, but that's the honest truth of how I feel. Trustee Mackamore, or Attorney Mackamore.
I was a month ago or so put in the position of being legal counsel to policy for the college. The college has done a great job, Terry and Mike, leading that subcommittee, bringing things forward to the board for its consideration. Now, if the goal is to review all the policies every three years, as Dr. Swain just noted, then what the board, in my view, should do is set the policies on a three-year review track so that everyone knows what month which policies are being reviewed. And then back up and set up a time for input from the faculty assembly, the senate, the ASIC, okay? All the, all the constituency groups so that they can comment on policies that are related to the college operations.
So the, the board policies will be reviewed every three years by the board's?
Well, by the board, right. But, but the rest of the college policies.
We are, sure, we're already on a three-year cycle for that.
Yeah. And I just don't know what month they are.
Trustee Mackamore, or Attorney Mackamore, thank you.
Not trustee yet, but you guys are tempting me.
I would be honored to sit with anyone on this board, including you. The, I do think you do have a good suggestion to basically set out a schedule for the policy subcommittee. And then other trustees, in anticipation of that policy that's gonna be, go under discussion, could volunteer to participate in that subcommittee thereby, which would probably force it into the, you know, open meeting, kind of a planned, regular policy working session, kind of think of it like that, is what I would think of. Trustee Banducci.
I like Mr. Mackamore's idea. It's not something I had considered, but I haven't been intimate with this process like Terry and Mike have been. But I think that sort of structure, that formalization of it and having the definable schedule, it's the same thing I've, even at looking at our recurring professional contracts and when we, when we have to review those, whether they're annual, semi-annual, bi-annual, whatever. Same thing with the, how we address the, the policies and procedures. I think if we codify it and then we have a very specific structure and schedule, that will help us to maintain it and stay with it. And it won't, won't be, it won't get neglected and we won't find ourselves tardy in these reviews. So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, actually, we instructed Kristin today to put together that schedule and it'll be proposed to you at the next meeting. And for your input. Okay?
Wonderful.
So it's already on its way.
Very good.
So, not to belabor this moment, but what is the plan forward with external agency funding?
I will provide a report, probably in December or January.
Mainly, yeah, okay. That is one way forward. That was already been proposed. And I'm asking if that is still the plan.
I think so.
Yeah.
Sure.
So I'm hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I think it's consistent with what we're saying now, but I ask at least for a minimum that either we have the report review documentation by December or by December, we're told, and we can expect that.
And, and again, just to make sure.
You guys are making legal assessments without even including our lawyers. It's amazing. Go ahead, Trustee Wagner.
I don't think any, I didn't make any legal assessment. I don't know what she's referring to. My concern was the mechanism. Obviously, the board has oversight over the college.
Not without a policy.
No, they don't need a policy to have.
They don't need a policy for that. We don't have a policy for every little thing that happens. And he's going to be reporting as part of the recurring reports in some schedule so that the board knows what's going on and the board can comment and control that.
Comment and control that.
Well, I, I, Mr. Chair.
Elaborate on that. Trustee Banducci.
I, I'm not sure what Trustee Wagner was referring to, but my thought on that would be is we do have the authority under the budget process, whether you want to call it a line item veto or whatever. But when we get to the budget, if there's issues with some of these things, we can specifically address those. And then either we approve the budget or we don't, or we come back and we work it. So those, that's the mechanism. That's the lever. We control the budget. We can approve it or not. And we can go in and specifically ask about these various, various items that we're, we have of interest, not just on this topic, but on other topics, whether it be that or athletics or whatever. And then if we're given the satisfactory answers and we're, and we are comfortable with the budget and the process and how it all came out, that's fine. We approve the budget. If it's not, then that's our lever, that's our mechanism. So I think.
So, so if there's a concern on the board for certain items, you can still get it addressed? There's no question. And it needs to be addressed with President Swain.
Right.
All right.
That's appropriate, appropriate response.
Yeah.
All right, moving on from board policy. Is there anything else? Trustee Wagner or Trustee Zimmerman?
Nothing here.
No.
All right. May I have a board member make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Trustee Corkle, is there a second to that?
I second it.
Trustee Zimmerman. All those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Hearing three ayes. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Board response to constituent groups. At the beginning of this board meeting, the chair passed out, "Board response to constituent groups is mainly the front page you necessarily have to pay attention to. The following appendix and such is kind of to help the community just be situational awareness of going, why the board response essentially is, is a response to something else." And so the appendix is kind of including the constituent group's report. Is there thoughts, or as chair and the author of this, sole author of this board response to constituent groups, I'll make the motion to, for the board to approve this board constituent group response. And is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Trustee Wagner, thank you for taking us to discussion.
This one is the one you're, you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was handed out?
That was handed out. And just to make things complicated for you, the, the board appendix part just may. appendix part just may, uh, get handed to the professionals to make, be a little bit nicer, to just get a formal copy of their document incorporated properly, along with the staff. It kind of has some underlinings to it. So, that's the only changes that'd be. But basically, our part that we'd be responding to would be this front page.
Okay. That's, uh, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corkel.
I, I would approve this as a good start.
Thank you.
Okay. As, as a good start to, to repairing relations with the faculty and staff.
I'm hearing that is a support to pass. Any other comments to this item? Do not mean to rush you.
You know, honestly, I'm just starting to read it. I've been participating in the meeting, and you just handed it to me.
Why don't we, this is getting along me. Why don't we take a 10-minute break?
Thank you. That'd be great.
Everyone take a 10-minute recess. It's 8:15. See you in 8:25. Encourage you to maybe wander over to the men's basketball game. So, but maybe do come back. We do like you. Audio check. Okay. We are returning, and we are moving to board response to constituent groups. That's tab two. And there is a motion and a second before the board to approve this board response to constituent groups presented here. I think Trustee Zimmerman, you were, oh, you're still writing. Take your time. Trustee Banducci, or Trustee Wagner, or Trustee Corkel, looking at you if you want to say anything.
Nothing other than what I've already said, that I consider this to be a start.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did we provide a copy of this to the board clerk?
Not yet, but.
Okay.
Chair.
Trustee Wagner.
Yeah, I would second what, uh.
Trustee Corkel. It's getting late.
Trustee.
While we await further input, a start implying a next step, do either of you have a idea of a next step, or kind of wait to hear from constituent groups again and have a dialogue?
I think this is an important document. It looks, you know, as, as pretty good for now.
I just want to say, the team that I engaged to author this document, I just want to say thank you for your contributions. You know who you are, and I appreciate your support. So, um, the, Trustee Zimmerman, I see you done writing, not to put you on the spot, trying to get the meeting moving along. Is there anything you would like to say, or shall we call for the vote?
I think there's some positives here. That's, and I like what Trustee Corkel started with. It's a good.
All right. All those in, all those in favor of approving this, say aye.
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 Hearing three ayes. All those opposed, say nay. All right. The motion passes three to zero. All right. The discussion for president's goals metrics. Dr. Swain.
So, um, we addressed these yesterday at a, at a public workshop. Is that right? Yesterday? At a public workshop. Um, the, the minutes of that are available. I, I don't, I was not prepared to add anything further to that. I, I think we discussed yesterday that these were things that I present, but not necessarily that are approved by the, by the board. These are things that are kind of a work in progress throughout. And so, with that in mind, I will, I will conclude my report. They, they are in the, in the board packet. They're publicly available. And, and again, they are a work in progress. So, without further ado, I will, I'm subject to questions.
I think there was two trustees who were absent yesterday for this discussion. Please look over specifically that board packet, and if you want additional metrics, engage your president on that topic. Have that discussion.
So.
Moving to tab four. Trustee Wagner, in closing.
So, yes, I was one of the ones that was not there yesterday. I had a conflict, and I have reviewed them.
Wonderful.
And my experience, you know, I have lots of experience in management and MBA and that type of thing. And they look like a good start, and we'll just, from experience, go on. Okay?
A living document. Moving to tab four, approve Head Start bylaws. Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce Bethann Fuller?
It's, it's actually going to be Sarah Garcia, at least to kick it off.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, board, and audience. Before Bethann comes up to request your approval of an amendment to the Head Start Policy Council bylaws, I'm going to use this opportunity to give you all a very short background on Head Start governance. The Head Start Act defines three elements of leadership for the grant. The first is the college, and thereby the board of trustees, who have legal and fiscal oversight over the grant. The second is the policy council. That is a group of elected members. They oversee program direction, and then management and staff who support the program and oversee the day-to-day operations. Policy council is an elected group that consists of parents of currently enrolled children and community representatives. Their role is to set the direction and goals for the program, to ensure the program is meeting the needs of the participants and of the community. I have the honor of participating in policy council as your representative, and can attest to the dedication and commitment of this group. They work on enrollment, recruitment priorities, budget planning and monitoring, the bylaws which, by which they operate, which is why they are here today, and as well as personnel policies, and approval of all new hires, contractors, and volunteers. And I'm going to call Bethann up to share the changes that have already been approved by policy council and for your consideration.
Thank you so much, trustees and community. So, the, the one specific change that our policy council parents made to their bylaws for your consideration are that they would like to add a member at large. And so, an example of the reason that they would like to do this would be a parent who may move from one community to another within our five counties, and not be able to continue their policy council position for their specific center. The policy council could then decide to keep that parent on the policy council by voting them as a program member. So.
Due to eligibility requirements, I take it?
Right. So, every parent committee at each center gets to choose who their representatives are. And so, depending on the size of the center, they would choose either one or two parents to represent them on policy council. And so, they vote that person onto policy council.
Wonderful. Any further presentation?
That is the only change for this year.
Bethann, one quick question.
Sure.
Is this a position that would be unfilled unless that was necessitated because of like a circumstance you described? In other words, if they were getting two, would this be a third position, and we'd fill the regular two, and then we'd keep that third one in the backup in case we needed it?
So this is in addition to the base ones that are filled regularly, and it's kind of a extra just in case you need it?
Thanks for that question. We hope to keep it filled, and we hope to have that one position, that member at large position also give us an opportunity to be able to have that member be able to apply to be on Idaho Head Start Association, who has a director, staff, and parent, and then also member at large positions at the state level. So we would hope to have someone in that position each year.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions, may a board member, if they would, say so moved for a motion to approve these proposed bylaws?
So moved.
So moved, trustee Wagner, thank you, is there a second for the board?
Second.
Trustee Corkel, thank you. Hearing no further need for discussion or questions, all those in favor of approving these presented bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hearing four ayes, all those opposed, say nay, that's me, we're good. Um, four in support, have a nice day.
All right, thank you very much.
Motion passes. Okay, tab five, approve 2023-24 board goals. The, also on Monday, you've seen these before too, I think at the previous ACCT training, they were initially proposed for. Now, is there any discussion, how about we make a motion? As chair, I'll take the honor to approve these board goals, and I would like to see them pass, so all those in, I would, I make the motion to approve the 23-24 board goals. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Wagner, thank you. Go into discussion, I would just like to go on the record that in future sessions, when we're approving board goals, I think it would be wise for boards to provide kind of action plans of expectations to go along with those goals, of how they plan to achieve those goals, and translate these goals into actions such as board members shall participate and professional development, what, what does that look like? What, what are your options to get there as a trustee? So, I think that would, as we've said on many times on our policy subcommittee, that it's a start, and I'm excited to now have board goals. So, I think with ACCT training, it's proving fruitful. Hearing no further discussion from trustees, all those in favor of approving these board goals, say aye.
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 Hearing three, trustee Corkel, if you could lower your microphone.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All those opposed, say nay. Three to zero, this motion passes. Moving to tab six, approving 2024-25 board regular meeting calendar. As a board member, would they please make the motion to approve 2024 board regular meeting calendar as presented? If so, say so moved.
So moved.
Trustee Wagner, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Corkel, thank you. Is there a need for discussion, it's getting late, I'm going to proceed to a vote unless you raise your hand. All those in favor of passing this calendar, say so moved. Say, say aye.
Aye.
It is getting late.
It is getting late.
Aye.
Hearing two, three, go into three, all those four, all those opposed, that's me, it's four to zero, it passes. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to table the next two agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Wagner, thank you, sir. Although, so that does not go to discussion. All those in favor of tabling the next two agenda items, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes three, with three votes. So, these remarks to the, for the good of the order, if any trustees would like to say something, trustee Banducci.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I think are worth noting. President Swain mentioned the one about being named best in Idaho versus our, our three sister institutions. It's a pretty big deal. I would encourage everybody to, if you haven't, go back on the Corleone Press site, Saturday, October 7th. Jason Elliott did a really great article, had an interview with Nate Koval, our, our new, our women's basketball coach. It's a really good article and very positive, so I'd like to encourage you to go ahead and go look at that. Three of us presented recently at the ACCT National Conference, you're going to hear more about that, I think, in the future. And it was in the NIC now last Friday, actually, Professors Tedman and Wilhelm did a fantastic job. Came back with a couple of interesting items from that. One, I've been talking to Mr. Halloran about, some ways to work with some CTE partnerships. And, and another one I'm going to pass on to, to Sarah, and it's about employee retention credits, and it's a way that we may be able to get some additional funding for the college, I thought it was some very good information. One of the things when we go down there is we hit a lot of different seminars and presentations, and we're able to glean some, some, some new information and some things that might be able to be applied here at our school, so. Part of what we do when we're at those conferences. And those are the few things I had to mention.
So, I, I'd just say thanks, on that last point, the ERC, Chair McKenzie called me down and asked me to join him in a conversation with the same gentleman. And so, we've been in conversations with him, and I, I think that's a, it's not really clear 100% if we're going to qualify, but it is a, it is a really nice opportunity, and so we'll, we'll engage with him and, and see if there's any money that we can get out of that program. Yeah, thanks.
And remarks for the good order, and hearing not, I just want to offer an invitation, if any trustees want to kind of put a, put a summary of our time in Vegas, of what conferences you went to, or what you found interesting, what, what NIC could learn from other colleges. I know, as time permits, I intend to, with a goal for next, next month, if anyone wants to work with me on that, putting it into the board packet, that'd be awesome. Trustee Wagner, you're going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that people may not, that folks may not be aware that we all took four days of our time and went down to Las Vegas, and no, we were partnering, partying, rather. We were working hard, going to seminars, learning more about the role of trustee, and learning what other schools are doing.
There wasn't.
Very productive.
It was very, it was a busy time.
Busy time.
Having said that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming.